You're on, sir.
Okay. Call us meeting to order November fourth, twenty twenty four. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I do just do the flag of the United States of America. I did recall it, which is saying one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Start down here. David Mills here.
Linda Fredericks here.
John Green is here.
Tim Easter chair. Make sure your mics on, by the way. Public comments. Any public comments? Okay. We'll just keep on going. New business. Want to start with A?
Yes, sir. Let's do it.
With A.
All right, so in your packet there, you'll see a packet for Stephen Rose. Mr. Rose actually owns a couple pieces of property in town. One that's under consideration this evening for a partition is on Eighth and Main. This was the former Erwin property, former Menard property. He also owns the gravel parking lot area across from Long Timber as well. And he is, that'll be his next project is putting a commercial building there. But this one is a residential building. This was, and the very last page here will be the, the actual partition drawn up by the surveyor. So, in essence, this lot originally had, or at least Mr. Menard had four partitions, which really weren't accurate, and it wasn't ever recorded as such. So right at the moment, it's one giant lot that he would like to basically split into two lots. So basically, and he wants to put a home on the north most lot. And the south lot would be empty for the moment, either for resale purposes at some point in future, or he might place a, some kind of residence on there for rental purposes of that sort. The only other thing I told him, I said, this is right next to the Eighth Street right away. It is currently a gravel street that goes back to a abandoned home. And then Ballard, I believe, is at the very end down there. There are no other homes being serviced by this. What I would suggest, what I have told him is that we would, the city is not in the process of doing Eighth Street, but he would have a remonstrance whenever we do do it. He will be responsible for the entire length of his property, for his portions of the improvements. I would, however, on Main Street, require him to put a sidewalk and improve his frontage on Main Street as part of the condition.
Where is the property split going to be? Right in the middle?
Yeah, really, it's right in the middle. That's why I asked too. It's from the circle, the A, the A marker to the D marker, right?
Now, since that part isn't being developed, you'd still require improvement on Main Street?
At the moment, because there's a sidewalk on the other side, yes. So he's going to extend the sidewalk, but I'm not going to let him, but Main Street, Eighth Street can stay until such time as we actually get around to doing something with that. That's one of those minor streets that do not have a lot of traffic on it. It really only serves at the-
Basically, it's one long driveway.
Is one long driveway.
Are there any tax ramifications by splitting that?
Not, not right off the bat, but if he puts a rental home on there, yet another home on there, yes. At the moment, it would be just a partition.
But right now, there's nothing on there, right?
Nothing, zero.
And he's talking about building-
Fairground.
Building a home, a residence on there, right? And he showed me the, the site plan for it, and it fits the setbacks and all the requirements for a permit to be granted. We have water back there. He knows where the water is, knows it needs to connect to our water sewer. We have all that laid out. He has a fourteen thousand dollar credit, SDC credit, that was agreed to by the city some years ago. But I, I'm, was involved in that, so I'm aware of the paperwork and where that was done. Current SDCs are twenty thousand thirty-eight dollars. So he would owe six thousand plus the tap fees.
What was the credit?
Fourteen thousand dollars and some change.
And that was for?
Menard. That when.
Okay.
He negotiated that with the city.
Ah, okay. And these lots still are in the appropriate size?
Yes, yeah, he has, he complies, the lot would be big enough for his residents to comply with the, the site plan. What would happen after this, after the partition has been agreed and, and recorded, then he can go ahead and go through the permitting process. His site plan then would be reviewed by the city, by me, and then sent up to Benton County to their permitting, which would then co-review it and then issue the permit.
Address will be off of Eighth Street?
It'll be, yes, it'll be, it'll be an Eighth Street address.
And it has current sewer?
Yes, there's sewer going, there's sewer and water, a six inch water and a standard sewer going down Eighth Street on the west side of Eighth Street.
So I could serve the other parcel as well?
Yes, I could, exactly. And also the main lines for, our, our two main lines go right up Main Street on, right in front. So both water going up to the tank and coming down, and then where it splits and distributes throughout town, come right down Main Street.
Now, there used to be a ditch line. The east side of Eighth Street, all the way down. Is that still there?
Yes, it is.
And what's that gonna, what's going to be done with that?
He'll have to deal with the, K and D will have to deal with the, I think he's doing his engineering, his actual engineering work will have to deal with the stormwater. You'll have to put, make sure that there's either culverts in for that and extend it, or the ditches will have to be completed so that it, it matches up with the other sections that we have. That, that's now, stormwater is a huge issue, so.
And that water goes where?
That particular water ends up going down to-
The north, doesn't it?
Seventh Street. And then it, one, I think it, on Main, from Main Street, it cuts down Seventh to where Seventh and Eighth meet and goes into that slough there. If not, it goes the other direction to Orchard Street at some point in a split. One side goes to Orchard, one side goes to that slough on the Seventh, Eighth, where they meet.
So there's already pipes under the-
Yes, yeah, there's pipes on Seventh. Kelly Street, we're actually be adding some pipes on Seventh on Kelly Street and finish that out. We're also trying to identify where some homes are, because there was no stormwater, they dumping their gutters into the sewer.
Right.
Which I was told about, but I've identified now a couple homes along there that, that are that way.
Is there any downside of approving this?
I don't see, I don't think so. I like the fact that he's only doing two, you know, he's basically doing, this would be a lot line adjustment if it wasn't convoluted-
Right.
Before.
Right.
And it, the lots meet the requirements for the zoning without any changes or anything else, so.
Wasn't the, the four lot, was that historically there for a long time, or did that's something, is that something that Menard did?
Mr. Menard did, yes.
Yeah, that seems ambitious, four lots up there.
Yes, and he would have had to get, he was, he was arguing that this, you know, his grandfather did, if you probably remember the arguments. I got all the minutes. I mean, it was pretty extensive arguments as to what it was, but in the end, didn't fly.
He's aware of the requirements to build, so when he partitions and then finds things out, but he seems to have a good understanding of what, what will be required of him to build a house on that site?
Yes, and also, what's nice is that he's given me another detailed site plan of where he's putting his home. This is what he would be required to do to give to Benton County.
Okay.
And I've reviewed it to make sure that he understands and also he will also, has also been told in, in writing that he has connections and where they are, that we need to inspect them. Here are some contractors. I think he's used K and D, which is fine. We use H and J, K and D, Pac X. Those are all folks that we, and Brian Ellsworth, you know, Fairview Construction, we've all worked with. But I think he's using K and D out of Albany.
Are any subject tanks on this property?
No, there was, we identified the abandoned sewer lines and they've been capped. They were capped back when Mr. Erwin, a few years back, when he had the property. So that's the only thing that's abandoned back. There's no other tanks on this property. We did have one on another property, I think we discussed that at one point. There was, someone fell through it, actually. Stepped into it.
That's why I asked.
Yes. Surprises around every quarter in Monroe.
So this is information, and at some point, we'd have to formally-
I'm, I'm looking at next, the next meeting. So the next meeting will be a land use hearing. It's limited land use, so I do have to notify the neighbors, but I, but, but we don't have to go any further. You folks will be the final determination.
What do you need from us?
Any comments you have, any suggestions for the staff report that I will write? Mornings, look out for this, make sure that this has been looked at. This one's, I think, is a very straightforward piece, but that's what I'm looking for, is anything that you might want me to make sure that I review in the staff report outside of the usual comp plan type review.
The only thing I can think of amongst us is, anybody have a reservation against the remonstrance on any improvement on Eighth Street?
It's gonna be a rude awakening call when that-
Not at this point.
Yeah, when that comes up.
But then, Main Street will be improved just with the sidewalk.
Right, the sidewalk will extend.
And that's with a curb?
Yep.
Sidewalk curb.
Curb.
And where does stormwater go now for that?
That would have to be, that one goes down to a covert, then ends up on Seventh Street to that intersection at that point.
On Main Street?
It, it not right there, on, on the frontage of this property, it's just a ditch.
Okay. But the ditch is gonna be filled in with sidewalk?
It'll have to be, and, and with the storm drains, yes.
Oh, and storm drains? And how's it gonna tie in where?
He'll tie into, just to the east of that.
You gotta tear up the road at all?
No, I don't think so, but if we do, we will. I mean, if I have to go down there and extend it, I will.
Overall, it's a net improvement.
It's a, it's a net improvement, and the storm drains are really important, and I need to show that we're doing something with our storm drains, so.
When are homeowners notified of the remon, when they purchased the property of the-
Yes, it's on the deed. It's filed with the deed of the property, so the title company would, would let them know that you have a remonstrance filed.
Along with the five thousand other papers that you've got.
Yes.
That you're reading very carefully every word on every page.
But like the city did with the library.
Yeah.
Carefully read everything.
Pretty cut and dry.
Okay.
Sounds like you got it all under control.
Well, it'll be nice to have a building, some building back there.
Absolutely. Okay, let's go to B.
Well, this is Brady Croson. And the formerly Monroe Fuel Gas Station. And she is proposing the tumbleweed tap house.
Kind of.
And, yes, she did, and she has filled out her site review application. She's written a cover letter explaining a narrative, explaining what she proposes to do. She also has proposed a, you can see the parking plan, the very last, I asked her, she did a very nice job. Everyone gets really tied up with needing an architect to draw these things, and it's, she did, she did exactly what I was after. Just needs to be to scale. So you can see that what she, she would like to put some food carts in there. The S two that she has up there, she's not decided quite yet. There might be some vending, there might be some, either vending machines or arcade type things back there. She's going to have to, she knows an OLCC, if she's going to have any alcohol in here, that she knows that there's distances and other requirements, if she's going to have children, you know, minors on the site. I, I asked her to put in where the handy, she needed at least one handicap park, van accessible ADA parking, which she's identified on here. And it appears as though she has enough parking to satisfy the, our code. She's also will be submitting, I asked her to submit a, I don't know if she did or not. But we had a, she has, getting a written agreement from the Niestrums, if there's any overfall, if they could utilize a lot right next door. But apparently she has put enough parking in here to make things work.
Right, remember, we asked about that.
Yes.
This is all gonna continue to stay asphalt, right?
That is correct.
Except for where the tree is.
Except for the tree is. So the only, for this, the only other, I mean, I guess, you know, the parking and that type of thing is, you know, traffic, I suppose. I would also ask her, we do have the street that's, goes down to our list station is Pike Street. It is official street. I am going to ask again for, you know, as this area gets developed, and I, if this pathway, bridge pathway goes through, then, yeah, that, that could be quite busy. And we would want to pave it and, and make that part of it. It would be nice to, again, give her remonstrance for this, so that as she builds up revenue with her business, we're not killing her business right off the bat with additional charges. But yes, the Pike Street side, I think, would need to be attended to for, for partial improvement.
Does she give us the hours? I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. No, no.
Does she tell us the hours of operation?
Said she'd be open on Monday.
Let's see, I, I, there is a-
I don't see any.
Bottom of page three.
Yeah.
Here we go, Sunday through Thursday, eleven to ten. And then Friday, Saturday, eleven to eleven. I know one of the things that came up when Todd and Amy were proposing was the lighting, and was that gonna be an issue with, but she's on the other side. I don't think, I don't think that that's an issue, but-
There's no, there's no residential over there anymore. There used to be a house right behind, but that's gone.
Yeah.
And what I will do, though, is I will make a note in the report conditions that she needs to review the lighting to make sure that it does, is not on, on any oncoming traffic or-
Right.
Going across the way. That's, that's a good point.
These amusement devices, are they for kids or adults or?
I think at this point, they're for adults.
Are they taxable thing?
Yes, we actually have taxes for them, believe it or not.
The other thing that came up with signage, is that's ruled by the-
Also by the code.
Code.
Right, so they have the Monroe Fuel sign, and I think that they are only going to expand that to within the limits that we gave them for it. There are limits for that, since it's already there. But it is already there. I mean, we already have a, says Monroe Fuel. Actually, I think that's a great, they're not really going to change much of that, or put, the other thing that I said, are you gonna put some sort of moving light board, which would require your approval? But she said no. But anything that's out front that's a moving light board, like what's in front of the high school. If it's against the, a building off to the side, no, that's, that's, I don't consider that to be the kind of signage that, that the, that the land use code was referring to. They're referring to things that are out front that people have to stop and look at. Yeah. Because it's right there in front of you along the side.
There's something in here about delivery times?
She says twi, she said twice a week, we, on there somewhere, I read.
Yes, that would also be on page three.
Three.
Shipping, one to two, receiving a week. On page three, bottom.
Okay.
So you start looking, this is, that's good information, I, this is a redone site plan form from anything we've used before. But I did ask for the number, how many employees, because that determines how many employee parking lots you have to have. What is your customer trips? I mean, how many, what's your frequency of, of travel? I think sixty is probably, well, it's hard to say, it could, you know, that, that, that actually could be, if you're having a evening hours, could very well be sixty. And then shipping and receiving is one to two shipments of goods and product per week.
And this is separate from the coffee shop?
Separate from the coffee shop, correct. So the coffee shop has its traffic coming in.
She's got estimated number of people that will occupy the site, including family members, employees, one thirty-three, customers sixty. So she talking, there's gonna be equal number of customers as?
No, I think what she's saying is the estimated number of people that actually occupy the building versus the number of customers, the trip generation. So the sixty is how many trips customers are going to be making trips per day.
Generated trips.
Generated trips.
Customer trips.
Right, that's like, like cars going in and out.
Right, and there's parking, I think, for a count of fifteen?
Fifteen, which is what we require for-
The minimum.
Right. It's basically fifteen spots for every hundred square feet of, of, of building space.
You know, that area is already very congested. Right there. And would it behoove the city to maybe petition ODOT to put in a signal light?
We already have.
Already have.
Yes. At, at, and if they won't do that, add a minimum rapid flash of beacons, crossing beacon, beacons there. Those are the traffic, you know, like for schools.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you push the button and it blinks and everyone comes to-
Do that?
Yes, that, they're amenable to. And there's a grant for that, and so we've already, already applied for it. We think that regardless of whether there's business there, our pedestrian bridge, the Riverside District Master Plan, the amount of traffic and number of people that have said we need safe crossing, it more than justifies it, no doubt agrees.
Good to get on top of that.
Yes, I agree.
So time, timeline for this, or timeframe?
I think she'd like to start opening up as soon as possible. I think she's phasing this. I mean, you know, a lot of this stuff isn't gonna happen, like the food carts probably won't go in until next year. She is aware that we're working, we have permits, and there'll be a fee for that. She, that's great. The only thing that I am not a hundred percent sure of on this, and I'm gonna check, what I'm checking on is whether you can approve it this evening, or whether we have to have some further review.
There's a timeline here. By the commission approved and modified, public hearing, recent testimony. Official plan.
I think this just has to have site review. Just two point five. Conditional, she's not doing anything that is, requires a commit, a conditional. She has everything else is in there.
So with all this stuff coming down the pike with stormwater and the fact everything's asphalted over there, and where's all the water going at this present moment?
The way it's sloped is going to the street, going to Fifth Street, to the storm drains on.
Also, it already goes in the storm drain.
It already slopes down and goes into the storm drains. The rear, it is all sloped. It all is sloped from front to back. I mean, from the riverside to the street, from the street, it goes to the slough that's there down by First Street, and the other one goes down to the one that goes to the, up by the bridge. And that's where the water goes on those two parts.
And Riverside District color scheme, what is, what's their thinking?
Well, I gave her the scheme. I think what this needs to have happen, and I'm just gonna, one second on, if, if that's okay, sir. I think what I need to do is do a staff report based upon what we have here, and then present it for approval. That, that's the, that, that's the decision process, to make sure that all these different things have been complied with.
And it's-
All right, so.
Page six, it has a list of things, if we were to prove the site plan, I don't know if we've got.
And I gave her, yeah, I haven't had a chance, and she just brought this in last week, Friday, and I did give her the color, the color scheme on this that Toren had drawn up.
What she's got now, does it fit into the color scheme, or she wants to change that, or?
She hasn't said that she wanted to change it. Which is fine. I mean, as far as the condition, you say it has to match these color schemes.
Right.
You don't have a, you know, you can leave it as is, but as soon as you do, it has to comply with this. Same with the signage. You know, you can leave the sign up there and change the Monroe Fuel to tumbleweed, and you're, you're good to go. But if you want to change it, make it larger beyond these. She's been given the signage, all the signage information, all the parking information, actually I gave her kind of an enhanced version of the parking, so our, it's very confusing in all codes, but I, some cities have made it easier, so I borrowed what they had and- it's very confusing in all codes, but I, uh, some cities have made it easier. So I borrowed what they had and made it easy. Uh, plus our, uh, color scheme. So she has those things and I and those can all be conditions of approval. That your color scheme has to come from the just the palette and include that in the in the approval. You have your parking, you know, needs to be per this plan. And signage needs to be per our five point one two four, which is, I believe, signage. And if you need anything other than that, then you have to come to the planning commission for a conditional. That's our variance in this case. To allow it. So.
And these grocery carts are these, uh,
The food carts?
Food carts out in the front. Sorry.
Grocery carts.
The, yeah, the grocery carts, the food carts in the front. Um, is there a a catch basin already in there for grease and all that?
What I explained to her for that is that if you are going to empty, if you're going to provide a common uh, drainage point, then they has to have a grease strap. Uh, we required that of Ignacio's up there.
Yeah.
Uh, so that was put in. If they want to be self-contained, and many of them are, that's fine with us. Um, but if you want to provide a common drain point, then it has to contain a grease strap.
They got enough water supply for?
Yes, they do. Yeah, that that's there's there's no issue with water for that.
Yes, I mean, all utilities are adequate for that number of people.
Yeah, yeah, more than adequate. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's it's, uh, you're fifty feet from the little station. So you're you're good.
The bathrooms are big enough for accommodate all the people.
Um, they will have to get an occupancy permit from Benton County before they have people in there.
Well, and that was built back when there was no such thing as ADA compliance and stuff like that. So they might have some.
Right. So so there are some minimum things that they will have to comply with. For a commercial operation, but I'm going to leave that up to Benton County to argue with them.
What's going in S two?
Um, at the moment, S two is going to be as there was some ideas for it. One of them was going to be kind of like for kids to come up and play video games and that type of thing. Um, however, I also gave her the OLCC requirements for minors on the on the, you know, in within proximity to alcohol. And so I think she's thinking that over.
And if this one building's closed, bathrooms or is bathrooms always going to be available?
Well, and that's that's the that's the issue with having something outside like that is that if you don't have bathrooms and you're forcing young people to go minors into a building where alcohol is being served, then you can't do that. Unless they want to put some bathrooms out there.
Okay.
So I think at the moment, I think storage was one of the other alternatives for that space. But the OLCC requirements would be also be part of the conditions of approval that you need to meet the OLCC requirements.
So this is this is just a site plan review and all the building permit processes and stuff would
Threat.
To follow after.
Right. So all the comments that you've made this evening, I would follow up on a staff report and present that to you with the next meeting. For approval with any with with recommendations.
And the solicitor's decision criteria, we'd have to. We've talked about most of those.
And it's on the site plan. However, I would need to address those in detail on the, and then talk to Brady for any questions. If I don't have that information, then I need to speak with her about it. That needs to become part of the conditions of approval.
So with the food carts, they're going to have outside seating? What's your plan?
I think that most of that is for they have some outside seating around back around the side. They don't have a lot of room in back. Um, the property line is just right up against the building back there. Uh, I don't know if they made any arrangements with Niestram's to use that uh, back there on a temporary base but basis or not. That is a question, though, that they they're packing a lot of activity into a small space.
Well, I was just looking at that. And have you looked at the where she has proposed parking on front of the building?
Yes, I think that's a little
Is that?
It's going to be tight for the for the, um.
Now, I I understand that the coffee shop isn't open, you know, later on in the evening hours and stuff like that. So it may be a non-issue, but if there's cars accessing that coffee stand, there's the handicap or any of those parking spaces probably won't be able to be used. So.
Well, maybe the recommendation would be that you need to comb them off during daytime hours while the coffee shop's in operation. That might be a.
Yeah, just thinking.
Yeah, that's good. No, excellent, excellent, excellent point. Love it.
I don't see any. Is there any ballards around that coffee shop? Parking so close.
There is some in the front.
I think there's some on the front.
Yeah, the front of it. Yeah, which makes sense.
The seating could be, we know, see where she has sea on canopy.
Yeah.
So there could be obviously seating there.
Yeah, underneath the.
Under the canopy.
Yeah.
And I think that that's what the, um, plan was, as I recall. She was thinking about taking it down, and then there was another suggestion because we're she was in the office. Well, why don't you use that for your seating? Like, huh?
Oh, that's something you can always take down later, but it doesn't work out, right? It works incorporated into the nostalgia of it, I guess.
Seeing what's it done in Corvallis, making tents.
Right.
Little tents out in the roadway.
Yeah, blocked off all of Adams, I think, a few weeks back.
Yeah, well, when you get this nasty weather and you want food carts and places to sit.
Well, that makes sense. So.
Over time, she'll get it all worked out.
But I think it's a good idea about that parking by the thing there's the.
Raised the question to her.
Yeah, I think so. You know, I I don't have.
Rather do that earlier than later.
Yes, I I I think it's a great idea that that during the day when your traffic is probably not that much, they can use the other parking, but in the evenings you can you know, but you need to alternate. You can't have, because that is very close. And this could be you're going to have cars coming in and then people trying to park or back out. It's going to be an issue. Thinking of Wincor parking lot.
Oh, yeah, those super big long trucks.
Yeah, and everything else. The college students.
So you don't need anything from us necessarily now, just to.
These are wonderful comments. Just the wonderful comments that you've had. Probably drawing, I'll be making a staff report and presenting it next meeting for you.
Anything else, guys, on this one?
Ready for the next?
Okay, how about see if you're ready?
Okay, let me write one more note here. All right. Put the tumbleweed away. We'll tumble on oak, onto the oak.
I hear this guy is really tough.
I know.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, he did. All right. So this is Mr. Oaks. We have everything in place for him to put five partitions, partition his properties on the last page of your packet. So I've actually also.
What's the latest on that street that's not a street?
It's been that there is a proper easement in place. It isn't currently registered on the map site, but I did clear with, um, Joe Martis, who is the county surveyor, that the that the easement is indeed there. So we have an easement. The other part of that is, uh, the condition on that is at some point when the property is sold, that the street actually will revert to the city. That street will revert to the city and the landowners are responsible for improving the street.
And those addresses will be off Depot Street?
Yes, they will be Depot Street addresses. This currently I have it up on the map. This I don't know what Google Earth did with this current rendition. They that last year's, um, resolution was just so much better. Not sure. But this area right here, this is six forty. This is the actual property address here. There was a man. You can see the outline of a manufactured home here. Um, that was removed, uh, back in the nineties.
Oh, no.
No, two thousand.
Late. Two thousand.
Two thousand, yeah, two thousand. The nineties, I'm thinking of another. Um, so this area comes up here. This is, um,
Harry's.
Harry's house, Harry Myers. Uh, house here. The property alliance you see comes up, it's coming right up into this area right here, coming down. We have a, uh, a weird easement for Sixth Street right here that comes up at an angle like this. Okay. So you can see follow kind of where my pointer is. It comes down to about a a few feet down here and up to about thirty-five feet up here. This is the rail path, the rail easement. And then the proposed loss would be in this area right in here. So I believe, and Brian, you can address this. Uh, on here you have a access right here in this this area right here. Okay. So essentially, that would be like a flag lot address, like a flag lots then, but that would be like a flag lot driveway then for access for those. Mm hmm. Yes, they do. Right. We have all of our water and sewer actually coming straight down here, and then the sewer goes directly across here. So you have your property surrounded on two sides by sewer. Yeah. And we have water over here. We have water back here. Um, water, water and sewer everywhere. Uh, that's going to be a topic. He, of course, has been using it forever and ever. So um, and he's made me aware of that. So I'm, as this as this now goes into the planning, yeah, this is going to be his opportunity to start talking about how he is how the access is going to be made. I also think that this easement in front here is going to, this is this is a city easement, but it's gosh, it's almost, let me see if I can. I don't have the.
Easement of city property.
City property, excuse me. It is six, it's six, this is easement for Sixth Street is what it is. We can, we can put a city water line here, but the city water is out back behind here. Sewer and city water. Yeah, we have city water coming down this direction. We have city water coming all the way up to here, right up to there.
There's, yeah, and there's.
Right up to your corner.
City one, but isn't there an old two inch going down the alley between Dollar General and the Wilder Ellis?
Yes, there is. And there's a two inch going this direction up to or actually right up to here.
Yeah.
All the way up here. And then we have a six inch coming all the way down here. Yeah, a along with the sewer. And the sewer comes all the way down this way, then all the way across that direction. Right, yeah. So your your water line would probably be right up at the this corner up here, and you would extend it down, but the sewer taps are right behind your property, which is actually great, because now you're not quite, your water's not crossing your sewer, which always makes the excavators a little nervous.
So so the this is five different lots, because originally we when you brought this up, it was going to be like a fourplex or something like that, a single building.
Right, this is to be single, single five thousand, uh. Right. So we've already looked at this part, this area for GRB asset process. These are six thousand square foot lots. GRB is fifty-five hundred.
But isn't the Sixth Street easement going to cause problems, um, developments?
Well, the problem with this is is that I'm going to say that I just do the lineup there where the the maximum Sixth Street easement is. The section that's fronting Mr. Oaks property. I'm not sure what the use of that is. It's so narrow, it doesn't really connect anything. We would have to work this property here along here. This is still even though it's leased with this, it's owned by the county. Our Sixth Street comes up to right to this point right here. So our sixth street's right here, but how do you cross over and make it anything over here? It it seems to me that.
Would the city abandon that?
We we could, we could.
Sell it?
Or sell it.
Be interested.
Yeah, interested, because what that does is give a much wider, this this gives a real street really between what Mr. Oaks is asking for is I'm going to draw this line here.
Yeah.
See, this would give him all this area between this line and.
Basically from the ditch over.
Yeah.
What it was.
Yeah. And so that's that was kind of a thought I had when I was looking at this is you know, otherwise the city has to maintain it and mow it and everything else.
It doesn't extend further north?
It does. This, at this point, it becomes it at where Depot Streets coming across here, at this point, it becomes more of a proper street. It is being used, um, right now, it's just being used by a driveway for Verna's old home there. Um, it's being used as a a driveway in the easement for that. But this easement here actually extends a thirty-five feet wide stretch a street all the way up to Ash. Cross pine and up to Ash, so. Let me back out here a little bit. But the season goes all the way down here, but it's only proper width between this point and Ash Street. Here, you can see it just narrows. It's a very small section of property goes down to about eight or nine feet at the south end and about up to thirty-four feet up here. And then, you know, it's just a very narrow triangular piece of property. So it isn't suitable for for city use per se. Um, we do have a path that comes here, so it's not really useful as a path, because we already have rights to put a path in. It seems that it would serve those homes probably a lot better than.
Yeah, I would recommend exploring the idea of moving that from the city.
Okay.
In my mind, that benefits the city and.
And and why was.
I I agree. Yeah.
What was the rationale for having in the first place?
Who knows? That was probably just a something from
Way back when.
Way back when, yeah, when it was a railroad and this and that and the other.
Would it be any value extending that street from that point north? I mean, it where you have a wide enough.
Right here.
Yeah, is there already access and?
We've actually, uh, have thought about that. And for fire safety, that was a, that was a that has been brought up. It actually actually start connecting this. Excuse me. This street right here, just improving this would probably, um, at the small community block grant, um, loans would probably cover that because they're looking for safety.
And and depot section will become of.
Right. And so we're having streets here. So this would become another access point and escape route for that. And so, um, identified that for next year's SBC.
Where's the closest hydrant?
Uh, we have hydrants. Let's see. Well, down here. Uh we have hydrants, let's see, well, down here somewhere. Right here, in this area, we have one. Uh we have another one over here. So we have three hydrants probably in the middle section. We have a note for Chief Barnes to follow us out there. Uh like we did up on um North Ninth Street. When we wanted to put something out there, he thought that was a great idea. Of course, Chief Barnes, there's no no to fire hydrants, so.
And he'll want the newest ones.
Yes, and that's what we did up in North Line, with the stores, I guess what they call them, stores. So this is a limited land use, so um the next step would be I take your comments. We that we talked about. And then we basically put notices out to all the folks and uh next month we have a um.
Well, with. New housing on a. You don't even have a road developed. Uh you're gonna need curb better sidewalk and what a half a road. What are you planning?
Uh for Depot? For this section or for?
For the houses, how do you get the?
Uh there they'll have to have a, what we call it, like a flag lot driveway, or with the city, we'll have to look at the easement here and see how that works, but he's uh. Brian has already proposed on a site map where the um access would be, and this is very similar to the end of Shelby. So if you go down to the end of Shelby, you'll see that we have four homes. On a what looks like a driveway, it's with a bulb out for the emergency vehicles. Now, that's not the best in the world. The best would be to extend and get, allow a little bit more room with that easement.
Well, you bottleneck fire trucks in there and that's not good.
Right, and that's, yeah, we have an emergency like a pullout over on.
I've seen it.
Yeah, but it's not big.
Doesn't excite me either.
I would imagine.
So you're talking about a fence being put up? Harry?
Depot Street didn't go through there, I can't quite see what happens, but it. It's not a streak yet, but it keeps going west from that point.
It used to.
It used to.
Everybody complained about cars ripping through there, so they.
So Harry bought actually a couple parcels here, which actually block off. Depot Street from attaching um interconnecting to Seventh.
There's there's no easement here.
There is no easement. So we have a Depot Street on this side. Nothing here, and then Depot Street extends down here.
So there's never a connection as far as.
Nope, there was at one time.
Yeah, well, it was just just an open road.
An open road, yeah.
Yes, it was. Use it a lot. So the the house, the furthest south house you wanna put in. Does that butt up against the city lot?
Down here.
Yeah, and that's that lot, are you talking about selling that to the house on the corner yet, or what are you planning?
I I'm still, this is um the. Someone made a mistake, clearly, um with the title company. When they did this, and so the city council knows about it, and I think the idea at this point is. Give them the property, their property is on our city. Actually, don't give them the whole thing, but they're. Our, the city property goes right up to the sliding glass door. So you give them their backyard back, but keep the slink.
You have sewer, butter and.
Yes.
Storm grain.
But it's, uh we have a slew there with a storm, the storm coming down the middle of it. So basically where their fence line is up to uh Mr. Oaks property. So it would just narrow it, it wouldn't eliminate it, we just narrow it down, so we still have an easement there, a property that has the um sewer.
You like an alleyway?
Kinda like, but it has a big ditch in the middle of it.
Right. Is that gonna eventually get filled in?
That'll eventually get filled in and uh probably made into some kind of, probably may even be the connection between Sixth and Seventh. At that point.
And you're gonna put in fence two right there? Ideally. So you're gonna finish out that house? Right. Yeah, you're gonna be kinda like.
Okay, so basically you wanna put the road like right in here. Okay. Well, I think what the, uh, cause right now, because of the season, you'd be backed up this way. That's a lot. Well, I think that I think the city would be amenable to working with you on this easement, I think for the verge. For safety purposes, fire trucks. And everything else, and eliminating city headaches down the road. Um it's not useful to the city in its current configuration.
Lighten the burden a little bit. So the the pit that you're gonna have to fill in, are you gonna have? It's not his property. It's not your property, that's the city's property? Is that something that?
Oh, which pit are we talking about here?
Well, the ditch.
Yeah, the ditch at the moment's an open slope.
You don't wanna fill any of that in with.
Not at the moment, I don't.
No.
But I think going forward, yes, particularly with the stormwater requirements, if I have an open ditch, then I have to somehow maintain it. And they want trees and brush and everything else that no one else wants, it's it's a it's a mess.
So you need dirt down there across from the library?
Oh, the dirt to sound.
Looking ahead.
I know. I'm a.
Helping you out.
I think what we would end up doing is putting a big culvert to there. And then uh backfilling it and then putting gravel and then making a road out of it.
But you still got sewer and water lines under there.
We do. Put a gravel road in. Make it easier to dig up. Yeah, I don't know if you remember a few years back when we broke the sewer line back here, that was I. I was around when that occurred, it came down, that was just a muddy mess.
Would that help with uh exiting out of that area?
Yes, it would, because what we would do is make it a uh, we could actually tie this into Sixth Street at that point. A- a- at a minimum, it could be a wonderful fire access and emergency access point. Everything gets kind of because of the how the property lines, because of the weird seventh edition. Skew, um it's all gets bunched up down here, and there's really no place for a lot of these homes to go. For people to go in case there's some sort of conflagration coming this way, this way, you know, it'd be nice to be able to, or emergency vehicles to get in behind. Someplace.
It'd just be a good time to to uh do some city work if uh you've got all this heavy equipment. There and. You need egress and all that.
It's a good point.
Oval pipes are not that expensive.
And I wrote it all down.
Alright.
So.
Now, we like uh, we like new buildings, so. It's good. Are you thinking? Just don't need a bottom line. Favoritism to your assistant? Good man. Gonna keep peace in the family. When family's involved, things get interesting. Oh, yeah, yeah, baby. Alright, what else do you want?
I think I got a lot.
I could talk all night for you.
Nope, no, I think, I think dealing with, I think some of those are good ideas, I think thinking about Sixth Street. Is that something you access?
Buying that city property? Plus, there's a grant the two possibly could get.
For this area here, yes. For this, I would just simply, I think this would just be um, do a street vacation on this section here. Right, right. It would give you, it would it would just make things a lot better.
I think it would really open up options, so.
Okay, uh excellent ideas, and I, this will be part of the report, and we'll make, put that before council as well.
Anything else, guys? Okay. Building application Orchard Street D.
Um I don't have anything in the packet for this, this is a. A um. Family the E S C. Shish, Shem, Shemzan, Shem Sananu, there we go, Shem Sananu. C H E M Z X A N A N O U. Thai. And uh they would like to put a twelve by forty, this is in uh Sam Pecorella's, one of his property pieces uh back there. Right, kind of adjacent to Jesse Bounce's property, and uh so it's a twelve by forty, it's. No. It's easily a big piece of property, it could actually be subdivided if you wanted to, he's been made aware of that. His parents wanna put a twelve by forty in there, they paid their S T C fees. I'm sorry, yeah, let's 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 head south here, sorry.
I mean, I know, I just wanna.
Right there.
Okay, that piece right there.
Right there, he wants to put right in here.
So that piece is sold?
Yes, it is.
What was her name?
Uh Shem. Zen Nanunu. There we go, C H E M X A N. A N O U. Very interesting name. But it is Thai, it's. Brian is uh. Um the son, but his parents are from Thailand, so. They would like to open a Thai. Uh hopefully maybe one of the food trucks.
I like Thai food.
Thai food.
Yay.
She's an excellent cook.
So they're putting a twelve by forty?
Twelve by forty manufacturer home.
And how do they get back there?
Um so right now, the this fence has been removed, there's a fence here now along here. Uh they'll need to get a Benton County access permit, which they're working on. We are going to let them put, this is actually a Seventh Street easement here. Um similar to what we did with the Ninth Street for the Habitat for Humanity Home at the end of Ninth, that is actually. The street goes all the way around and would someday connect. We gave them permission to use that as a driveway, um it's recorded with the deed. With the understanding that any improvements, if the city does decide to improve Seventh Street, they will be responsible for their portion of the um. Of the improvements, it was exactly the same agreement we made with the Habitat for Humanity.
So is it gonna be the same? Let's see, the gravel, it's gonna be a gravel road, just like Ninth Street?
It'll be, it'll be a gravel road that is, that has to be. Designed by an engineer, it'll be a condition.
To handle eighty thousand pound fire truck?
Yeah, we are for any, without sinking, yeah, it it has to be, it has to be.
Just skip a rock on there.
No, I asked, I told him, I said, you cannot just put a load of gravel on there and call it good, it'll, you will, you will be in. Under the ground by the end of winter.
Got it.
So essentially, at this point, um we do have a water extension coming partly down here. He'll have to pay to extend a water pipe down to his area here and also extend his sewer. So, but the water and sewer right here, so that's, that's not a, not a, not a huge issue.
A wide easement is that?
This here, sixty feet. Yeah, it's a sixty footer, it's a full street.
When you add a livable space. What does that do in terms of um code uh requirements?
For. For the.
For for number of people living on property. Now, isn't there a? Isn't there a code?
That says you, you're, how many people you can have?
Or or occupy buildings on a particular piece of property.
Well, in this area, you're allowed um one building and accessory building at this particular point in time.
And an accessory building can be a a habitable.
It can be habitable, yes, and and actually can be used now as a short term rental.
Okay.
So he could have in a, he could have a garage, which he intends in having a small garage. Uh the twelve by forty and that's it, but he could divide his land and put another similar. He has enough, he has enough property there to 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 divide it if he wanted to. It's just right now a very minimal. It's just for his parents.
Right. Nice, good son.
He's a very ni, he's a very nice young man. He is a very nice young man and and very, he's very attentive, I'm ver, I'm impressed.
So what's the plan for this easement?
At this point, at this point, we're waiting for North San E M to let us know what they want to do with. This property.
Right.
And we are in, and that's the next topic I can touch on a little bit, and also with this property, this is the U G B. Which the Department of Lands has notified me that they have their O A Rs completed for an expedited. U G B. Which doesn't mean you have to do a land swap anymore, for small cities like ourselves under twenty-five thousand, up to fifty acres. That's a one time deal, you can do up to fifty acres and that's it, but there's twenty here and thirty down here, so. The only caveat, and they highlight this in red, is, well, there's two things, one, thirty percent has to be affordable.
Right.
Okay, you see my bunny ears here, cause I don't know what that means. It could, it could be, I I think, I think based upon what other cities are helping define this to be. What it means is, for instance, they want to see kinda like an apartment complex someplace to make up that thirty percent of affordable housing. So you might have a GRB here with fifty-five hundred square foot, six thousand square foot lots, just like Red Hills. But at some point, you have an apartment complex that makes up the thirty percent of the homes. Not thirty percent of the property, but thirty percent of the homes need to be low income. The other part of that is you need to be able, the city needs to be able to justify. That. So for instance, we can say, you know, the city needs a. Tax base and we need more affordable homes in Monroe, I would skip the tax base, just simply say we need more affordable homes in Monroe. Cause we don't have any, I mean, that's, that's demonstrable. That we simply don't have anything that's affordable in this town. So. Otherwise, we fit the criteria. I've already talked, had verbal discussions. We've been talking about this, but this would also. Allow us to keep the. The light industrial land that we have. And then also give us an opportunity if Mr. Myers, Randy Myers of Brownstone Development, wants to take that property between Mill and Oak. And turn that into residential, we could trade that G R B that's in the pit up there to the north of it. Swap it for light industrial, and we haven't upset our comp plan. We, we've kept our percentages a little bit better.
There's a full fifty acres. Under discussion for the change or just a twenty?
At the moment, twenty. That's what I've discussed with them on that. With, with, with the D L C D. So I've had.
One time.
No, I can do up to fifty.
Oh.
So I can do twenty now, and the city can come back for thirty later if they wanted to. I'm. Going and talking, and then my next stop will be talking with Dayton. Dayton has gone through this process with the land swap, and they've been looking at this too. I just, I I call this the back door. In other words, just kind of start talking to people and seeing. What the regulators and people are talking to them about, rather than come in with this. One time plan, and they say no. Or they say, yes, but you're gonna have to redo your comp plan. I think twenty acres at this point, you could do it without having to adjust, just on the basis of. What we see and what anyone would see in terms of available affordable housing in Monroe. You can make that happen.
We could get a, another person to work on the comp plan.
And I, and I, and we're gonna be putting in for a T G M grant to do just that.
Yeah, because we need the parks plan updated and everything else.
T G M, and we also, as you have all pointed out, which is very interesting. And accurate is you pointed out that the wetlands needs to be revisited too. And I, I really do believe that. I think, I think we've, I've way too much wetlands identified in this town, and there is some areas that are. Quote unquote wetlands that they say is available for housing. I don't understand that. So there needs to be some, some alignment. I understand that the two thousand eighteen was a. It needed to be done, and it was in every, and it hadn't been, so. But I think it's, it's time for an update, so we'll get a grant for that.
Anything else?
Good.
You're all up to par. Okay, we've hit on the U G B that thing?
That, that we just talked about it.
Okay. Uh, any other business?
Sounds like we'll have stuff to do next.
Yeah.
Meeting.
You do.
Yep.
And.
Is that December? That doesn't conflict with anything?
I don't think so. I think we're, I think that, that particular date is. So it'll be December second, Monday, December second. Hopefully, everyone's back from. The vacation holidays, if you're going anywhere. If not, we can always, you know, if you're thinking that, because I'm backing up to November here. So there's Thanksgiving in this, in this time.
What time is Mike? I think it's morning.
But this week, but this week for me is fairly open, so I mean, if we need to reschedule into this week, that would be fine with me.
Next school out till the six, but I don't have any kids.
School's not coming.
Schools always out.
Yeah.
Dark kids.
Yeah.
Of course, if you're a teacher, I don't. You're looking forward to that.
My gray gun.
Yeah, I come back on the second, so. At Tuesday, that's alright.
What's with the housing up here on Eighth and Ninth? And what's going on with that? Anything?
We're talking now about. Water sewer. We're, we're getting down into, we're getting down into the negotiations with Serge.
Water sewer and storm?
Oh, and roads and gutters and streets and everything else.
And how's the county gonna play into this? How's the county gonna play into this off Ash Street?
They have already approved the access points for Eighth, Ninth, and Tenth, because they already have those there. They do have some requirements for the paving of that, which they're gonna have to pave anyway into that. Of course, the county always brings up each time. Why don't you guys just take Ash Street, which? I'm sure, given the amount of effort that gets put into it, either here or there, we might have a little bit more control over sidewalks and everything else along Ash Street. But that's it. Approaches and that type of thing are what we. We already have water extended across and sewer extended across the streets there. At those three points.
Just a matter of tying in.
It's just now tying in. They, they put stubs in, so we have stubs going up Pine Street. So we have stubs going. So the stub here on Pine Street going this way, stubs going all the way to here. And we have the water line going all the way down to here and over. And we have a sewer coming down this direction as well. So water sewer down to here, water sewer up to here, water sewer. Water, excuse me, sewer going this direction. The stormwater is, you can see coming down this way. This is the main stormwater catch basin for this area. This will be the bio swale, dare I say, rain garden area in here. Also, another one over here in this area. Now, this is, this is city property here.
Who owns that property up there, right there?
Right here. Part of this is Serge's, part of this is. Dykstris over here, and the city has this section right in here.
Which is Eighth Street.
Right, which is part of the Eighth, yeah, part of Pine Street.
And so where's Rain Garden going?
It'll have to go, one of them will have to go here. And the other one will have to go here, so it's gonna have to be something in this area and something in this area. There's going to be a network. This is an, this is an easement coming right straight down here. There's going to be French strains here. French strains here to collect things and pipe it into this kind of retention area, and then. You can notice we've kind of dug out the trench here.
Looks good.
Yeah, Mark did a good job on that, but they're gonna have to, they will improve this. And also, we're gonna have to, I'm gonna work with them to get, because this is an underground pipe here. That's gonna have to be widened and improved going down Pine Street down to the slough where it cuts into.
Because it's gonna accommodate more.
Yes, we have, and faster flowing water.
Oh, boy.
So the other area that is, that we'll have to deal with is right here. This, the land actually slopes this direction. And this direction collects right there, goes down here. I, the property owner here, I said, go ahead and dig a ditch. Here for that. We have a, this dot right there is a storm grate. That comes across into this property. But there, I, I said, but don't go hog wild on this side. Let the developer deal with that, because this is technically wetlands back here. They'll need to deal with that. And so. They have some money to do it. You don't, just make sure water isn't going to your home, which he's done, so he's happy at the moment.
Where's the, now Tenth Street? Where is the? County compared to the city? Where is that?
Right along this, this fence line right here.
The, okay, and that's a ditch line right now?
Yeah, that's a ditch line right now. This is Tenth Street, and this, this is the county. This is us.
And what are they gonna do there?
We're gonna have to improve here, and we're gonna have to improve all the way down here. So Pine Street's gonna be extending all the way up this direction.
Oh.
As, as well as interconnecting here on Ninth Street and Eighth Street.
Pine Street will dead end at Ninth or?
Yeah, I think, I think at the moment, he's planning on, I, I'm, I am going to negotiate up to Tenth.
Mm hmm, there's enough room.
I, there is, oh, yes, yeah, there's more than enough room here. Just to Mr. Ruiz, can't put his, I let him put his bounce house out there for his kids once or twice a year, but. That's the only. But yeah, yeah, so this, this will be fully with, with another road coming down this direction to help.
Is there any plans for a park?
No.
And we'll.
Have to be?
No. Not, not unless you. There is no plans for it. But you can.
Our problem is, we have nowhere for these kids to play.
I'd say, take this complex out.
Well, yeah, but.
I just took Monroe's only affordable housing out.
Is it really affordable?
Not, given, given what we see, no.
That's why Brady wants to put her arcade and fun zone in.
Yeah, but kids still gotta cross the road, so. I don't know.
You know, the other, the other thing too that that came up, of course, we have this area here, but this area back here could also be used as well. This is a big, this is our easement. Actually, this easement goes all the way up here too. I mean, we, we have Sixth Street going clear up.
Putting parks along the trail.
Yeah.
Would make sense.
Yes, it would.
Pedestrian, safe, safe pedestrian pathway.
Right.
Connecting the parks makes sense.
So that was a thought that came up. It would also help with grants to do that with the Park Masters, with the Park Masters Plan to identify these areas. And say, you know, we'd like to turn those into park areas. And get a grant for it. To, to clear it out and help with the fencing and other things that were necessary for the neighbors. But that would give kids an opportunity, because there's the library. Some park area that, that's safe, that's not next to the freeway, up at the freeway. The highway that I don't have to stop for a whole sixty seconds now to cross. Whoever thought to be traffic jams in Monroe.
The schools right there.
And the high school's right there. And so you have, you have a nice.
Right.
Area.
A good area.
Hey, any other? Things for agenda for next time?
We have, we'll have.
Have plenty.
We'll have, yes, we have, we will have at least. We'll have four items.
For the second.
I'll have three items and then probably a review of the Orchard Street. Area there, and, and there'll be an update on Serge's property as well, so that'll be in the, the old business, but a review of Serge's development.
I have a motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
Any second?
Alright.
We're done.
Hi, folks.
Yay, 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 thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, Bob. Yes, I talked with our attorney today, and apparently she was out sick last week.
Who was the other gentleman?
I needed a comma. She was waiting for me to put a comma in. Yes, she wanted a comma in her.
Why was he here?
Her certificate. Mine are fine. But anyway, we, I'm hoping to have those tomorrow and get those out of my.
What?
I know, we're holding, I told you, I said, well, a lot of folks are waiting for this to.